According to the, uh, clock is now seven o'clock and I would like to call the July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four Planning Board meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if you would, uh, please bow your heads with me, I'll, uh, lead this in the invocation. Dear Lord, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come and gather here tonight on behalf of the town. We'd like to ask for your blessing over this meeting. We'd also like to ask for your guidance and direction in decisions we make tonight. For us, in your name, we pray. Amen. Okay, item number three, approval of the June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four Planning Board minutes. Hopefully everyone's had an opportunity to read those minutes. Here are no corrections or additions. The floor is open for motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion. We approved the minutes from last meeting.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item number four is the swearing-in ceremony for, uh, Mr. Frank Pierce. I guess, uh, re-swearing-in. Uh, Shelley, you'll be handling it?
Aye, Frank Pierce.
Aye, Frank Pierce.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And maintain.
And maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a town of Roseville.
As a town of Roseville.
Planning Board member.
Planning Board member.
So help me God.
Welcome back, Frank.
Congratulations, Mr. Pierce. Glad to have you back. All right, on to the, uh, regular agenda items. Uh, just so it is noted, the, uh, item number two on the regular agenda, the merit property, has been, uh, pulled and rescheduled for August for right now, so that one will not be heard tonight. Um, so we'll move on to item number one, R E Z twenty-three dash zero five zero, South Main, two oh one, South Main, two hundred School Street, the Scarborough Apartments.
Uh, good evening Chair Moss and Planning Board. Mike could not be with us tonight, so I will do my best to present this case for him. The night in front of you is a rezoning request known as R E Z twenty-three zero five Scarborough Apartments. The rezoning would include three properties located at zero South Main, two zero one South Main, and two hundred School Street. The three parcels combined total thirteen point one five acres, and a voluntary annexation application has been received for two hundred School Street, which is located on the south side by the community ballfields to bring it into town limits. All three properties are currently zoned residential low, or RL. The landowners are requesting to rezone their land from the residential low zoning district to the town center conditional zoning district, which is similar to the cobblestone project located just over half a mile to the north. After this presentation, I will introduce the applicant's representative, who will discuss the seventeen conditions of approval, a concept site plan, the list of prohibited uses, the number of proposed multi-family units, the planned commercial component, the site design commitments, and considerations for the stone house currently on one of the properties. There were two neighborhood meetings held in accordance with L D O Appendix A, Section two point three point D. A traffic impact analysis was performed by StanTech. Mr. Matt Peach is available to answer questions after the applicant's presentation. This slide shows the future land use map, and if we zoom in closer on the next slide, you, whoop, you will see the parcels are circled noting that they were intended to be developed as high-density residential, given their location on Main Street. Staff feels this request is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, community transportation plan, greenways plan, and the Main Street Vision Plan. Vertical multifamily, or otherwise known as apartments, are considered to be a high-density use. Along with the ten thousand to twenty thousand square foot commercial or non-residential component, this complements the effort to reestablish the downtown as a town center. The proposed greenway would serve as a final link to the Greenway Network connecting to South Main Street, and the addition of the multifamily units would serve the housing diversification for multiple age groups and income levels, which has been a hot topic lately and something staff is working on now with the Affordable Housing Project. This concludes staff analysis. I will now introduce Attorney Worth Mills with Longleaf Partners, who is here representing the landowners and the applicants.
Good evening, members of the Planning Board. My name is Worth Mills with Longleaf Law Partners. I'm here on behalf of K D M Development, who is the applicant, uh, for this case. Uh, sitting, uh, with me today, Peter Crossit from K D M, Courtney McQueen, um, from Unity, uh, who is the, um, sort of designer of this concept plan, and Matthew and Barbara Shuley, uh, who are the current property owners of all of the, uh, the three, uh, three parcels there. The rezoning, let me get this into full view mode. There we go. So this rezoning would convert approximately thirteen acres from low-density residential to this town center conditional zoning, uh, district, uh, in order to bring, uh, new homes, new apartments, and new, uh, businesses, uh, to South Main Street. Um, which again, as, uh, Mr. Abbey mentioned, is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the, uh, Main Street Vision Plan. Um, we are also, uh, constructing a new collector street, uh, which will ultimately intersect with the street running through the town-owned property on the future, uh, community campus project, uh, to increase connectivity both for vehicles as well as pedestrians with the greenway alongside it, uh, between South Main Street, uh, and Young Street. So I'll, I'll go through some of these slides fairly quickly, because I think Michelle covered a lot of it. Um, the property has frontage on South Main Street, Perry Street, and School Street. Um, you can see, here's a view of the site from South Main Street, uh, the existing single-family home there. Uh, this is a view, uh, from Perry Street. And then lastly, you can see, uh, from School Street across from, uh, Roseville Elementary. Uh, there are a variety of zoning districts between, uh, Rogers Road, Redford Place, and Young Street in this stretch of South Main Street. Uh, you have general commercial zoning districts, residential low-density zoning districts, uh, general industrial, and, uh, the existing town center, uh, which is the cobblestone, as well as the Main Street Park. Um, amending the zoning map to a town center conditional zoning district for this site is compatible with the existing types of zoning districts, uh, along this stretch of South Main Street today. As noted, the future land use map designates this site as high-density residential. Uh, this stretch of South Main Street, uh, is called out for denser and, and more commercial development, whether it be, uh, just that general commercial in red, uh, the mixed-use neighborhoods in the magenta, uh, high-density residential, the dark brown, or that town center district, uh, in pink. So a lot of redevelopment, uh, contemplated for this stretch of South Main Street. Uh, just wanted to highlight here a lot of the similarities between the high-density residential and the town center, uh, future land use map designations. Uh, both call for a variety of housing types, uh, both recommend, uh, a mix of uses, uh, so, uh, including commercial with, uh, residential to, um, have a synergistic effect between, uh, having goods and services that support the people that live there and, and having people to support those, those goods and services as well. Uh, all with the idea of, as, uh, Mr. Abbey said, strengthening this stretch of, uh, Roseville and kind of reinventing, uh, this as a downtown, uh, destination. The Roseville Transportation Plan, uh, calls out for a new collector street that would realign with Perry Street run through our property and ultimately connect, uh, into the town's property. Um, the dotted line moving east-west, um, through the town's property, um, the subdivision to our southwest, um, Parker Ridge subdivision, uh, as part of their zoning conditions, uh, is going to construct, uh, that street that gets you from the town's property to East Young Street. Um, so that will be in place, um, when that development comes online. Uh, but our plans are consistent with the town's transportation plan. And, uh, alongside that, the town's greenway plan also calls for a new connection here. Um, and, and what we've planned is to have that greenway, um, on the east side of this new collector street. We worked with the town planning staff, um, for a good number of months on the precise location of that path and, and the most appropriate place for it. Um, so we have that path on the eastern side, uh, minimum ten feet wide with, uh, some enhanced screening, uh, for those neighbors that live on Glen Circle to make sure that their privacy is not interrupted, uh, from individuals, you know, biking, walking, running that path, uh, to get to South Main Street Park. Uh, as I mentioned, the, uh, rezoning is consistent with the Main Street Vision Plan. Uh, this site is located within the Village Core section of, of the Main Street Vision Plan, essentially, you know, the heart of Roseville. Um, and what this vision plan is trying to do, uh, there are five goals that are laid out. Create an equitable Main Street, promote diverse housing stock, celebrate the town with clear gateways, reestablish a town center, and retain and respect that small-town feel. And we think that this plan, uh, which I'll show you in a second, um, accomplishes that by bringing more people, bringing new businesses, uh, at a location where, uh, the town is looking for that new growth. As mentioned, uh, we held two neighborhood meetings, one in February and one in April. At the first neighborhood meeting in February, uh, a lot of the, uh, concerns that we heard from neighbors dealt with, uh, privacy, uh, and traffic. Um, I'll let Matt Peach, uh, cover the, uh, traffic impact analysis, uh, since he's here tonight. But when we came back at that April fifteenth neighborhood meeting, uh, we had included, uh, new fencing along the, um, edge of the greenway to those homes on Glen Circle, so creating some privacy at the ground level. We also included a fence for those single-family homes along South Main Street that we border. So trying to make sure that at the ground level, you know, there's not a situation where people can look into your backyard or vice versa. We also included, uh, some conditions that help, uh, with screening kind of at a, a higher level. So in addition to the required, uh, landscaping along both the street, this new street, and these, uh, adjacent single-family homes on South Main Street, we added, uh, two additional shade trees per hundred feet, so that, again, at the ground level, you've got an effective buffer, and then at those upper-story levels, you know, for folks in the apartment units, their view is going to be blocked out by, uh, the presence of those shade trees. At that April fifteenth meeting, we had, uh, planned for a six-foot fence. The neighbor said, can you make it eight? We said, sure thing, uh, and came back with a, with a eight-foot fence. That will definitely, um, prevent anybody from, from seeing into backyards, uh, on the ground level. We also prohibited balconies, uh, on the upper-story units of these mixed-use buildings that will face this new collector street. So no balconies on the facades that are going to face this new street and face the homes on, uh, Glen Circle. So again, trying to maximize the amount of privacy, uh, that our neighbors, uh, will continue to have. Uh, and this is a, uh, rendering of the concept plan. Um, there are some highlights that I wanted to, uh, share with you. They're on the right-hand side. So, um, kind of big picture, no direct access into the site via South Main Street or School Street. Um, the access is going to come solely from this new collector street. Um, we've got two entrances off of that collector street, one sort of at the intersection with Perry, and then one further south as you get closer, uh, to that stream there in the, the southern corner. We do have a standalone retail building along South Main Street. We don't have a lot of South Main Street frontage, uh, but we definitely wanted to locate new retail, new commercial uses along South Main Street. Again, that's going to be a one-story building, trying to make sure that, you know, you keep that small-town feel, uh, when you drive through that corridor. Going down this new collector road are two mixed-use buildings with ground-floor commercial space with apartments above. Those are planned to be three stories in height. And then, uh, as you get into the interior of the site, you have four standalone apartment buildings. Uh, those are programmed to be four stories in height, uh, with a courtyard and, uh, clubhouse amenity space, uh, right there in the, uh, the heart between those two apartment buildings in the center. Uh, you can see the greenway on the eastern side of that new collector road with the, the shade trees called out. Um, fencing is called out as well. And again, that, those same, uh, buffering, uh, techniques are being used for these, uh, single-family homes that, uh, abut us along South Main Street. Um, and again, that, that fence will be eight feet tall. This is a list of the zoning conditions, and I know that this is, uh, hard to read, so I, I did want to hit a couple highlights. We do have a list of prohibited uses, um, most of which are, are uses that would otherwise be permitted in a T C district that we felt were incompatible, given, uh, our proximity to single-family residences. Um, we have a limitation on the hours of operation for any new commercial uses. Um, they must operate between seven A M. and nine P M. Um, we have, uh, two conditions that deal with the existing single-family home, um, closer to South Main Street. That home's currently vacant. Uh, it's uninhabitable in its current state. Uh, what we have done is required, um, detailed documentation of that home with photographs and detailed elevation drawings. And another condition that, um, requires the applicant to, uh, publicize, uh, that that house is available to be relocated if a third-party nonprofit governmental entity, whoever, or, or just somebody who wanted to preserve that home, had the ability to come, kind of, uh, transport it to a new site. Um, so trying to make sure that we give, uh, people the opportunity to preserve that house if they choose, but again, I'll note that, uh, it is uninhabitable, uh, in its current state. Couple other items, uh, that I wanted to cover. We've got, um, again, two-hundred-and-forty total units. Um, forty of those units would be upper-story, uh, above the, the ground-floor retail on that new collector street. I think in our conversations with planning and then determining what our density is, that those upper-story units do not, I guess, count in your official density calculations with the planning department. Um, if they don't, our density is, uh, just over thirteen. If they do, I think we're just over eighteen. But we can confirm that with, uh, planning staff, either tonight or, uh, immediately after this meeting, um, and let, let the board know. Um, we have a range of non-residential uses, anywhere from ten thousand to twenty thousand. Again, trying to bring in sort of smaller, um, more intimate sort of retail uses that, um, will be attractive both for, uh, people that live, uh, in this, uh, new project, as well as those who live, uh, nearby. We want people to feel like they've got, uh, good neighborhood retail, whether it's coffee shops, bookstores, whatever it may be, things that they can use, uh, and enjoy as well. This is a look, um, again, very rudimentary, but it, it does give a sense of the collector street and some of the, uh, buffering, uh, that we're doing on that eastern side for the homes on Glen Circle. So you've got the fencing there with the enhanced landscaping. This is looking, uh, north down that proposed collector street. And I also wanted to show kind of an overlay of all of the nearby projects and how they work together. So in the, at the bottom is the kind of northern boundary of the, uh, Parker Ridge subdivision. Um, on the eastern side, you've got, uh, the concept for the community campus that the Board of Commissioners, uh, approved. Um, I, I think it was maybe six or eight months ago. Um, again, Parker Ridge is going to be, uh, constructing this new street through the town property all the way to East Young Street. And so the only thing that remains is this connection from our property boundary, uh, to that new collector road. But as everything is built out, you can see how everything is connected. Um, you'll have a lot of homes near, uh, new retail, near existing retail that they can get to, uh, via car or, um, on the Greenway Trail. Uh, a lot of new homes near, uh, proposed new community, uh, uses such as a library, a community center. So we, we think that this is a project that can enhance the plans that Garner has for its future campus and, and make the most out of what's planned there today. Have a lot of people in your library, a lot of people in your community center that don't need to drive ten or fifteen minutes to get there. Um, so just to summarize, this rezoning would bring new residential and commercial uses to the South Main Street corridor to help revitalize the downtown area. We've worked with neighbors to draft zoning conditions that effectively screen this development from, uh, the adjacent residential properties. Uh, this development includes construction of a new collector street, a new ten-foot-wide greenway to help increase connectivity in the area. Uh, and for those reasons, we believe that, uh, this rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest. Myself, Courtney, Peter are available if you have any questions. Um, I'm sure I'll turn it over to Matt Peach now to cover the traffic impact analysis, but, uh, we appreciate your time this evening, uh, and, uh, look forward to answering your questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening.
Evening.
Uh, my name's Matt Peach. I'm with StanTech Consulting Services at eight oh one Jones Franklin Road, Suite three hundred in Raleigh, North Carolina. Very happy to be here in front of you again this evening. Um, it's been a little bit of time, but it's good to see everybody again. Um, just a quick reminder of, of myself and, and how this works. Um, my, uh, my company, StanTech, is contracted through the town, so we are here to represent your all interests. Um, of course, our fees are paid by the applicant, um, but, uh, I'll come here and answer any kind of questions that you may have. Um, if there's a question that I have to defer to the applicant, um, it's simply because I can't speak for them. So, um, there, there might be instances where you've asked me a question and I'll have to defer to them just because it's, it's kind of up, up to the, up to them, how to, how they want to address certain things or go about certain mitigations. So, um, real quick on the study here, so, uh, you heard a good amount from, from Worth in your packet. Uh, probably the first thing that jumps out to you is that the study is still, um, with a big draft watermark on it. Um, that's simply because we wanted to give both town staff and the applicant, and the applicant a chance to kind of review and comment on the study before we turn it into N C D O T. If there's no comments on the study, uh, we're happy to take that draft watermark, um, put our professional engineer's seal on it, and submit it to N C D O T for their review. Um, their review takes between one and two months to complete, so there is a little bit of time in there. One thing you heard Worth say that I did want to draw your attention to is, uh, the land uses. We, uh, studied twenty thousand sque- square feet of retail. Uh, you heard Worth say that they're intending on building between ten and twenty thousand, so we chose the highest number. That's the, that'll generate the highest amount of traffic, so we believe our study is kind of on the conservative end of, of things. Um, but what you'll see in the recommendations are a, a couple of things. Uh, we are recommending some turn lanes at, um, Rogers Road, um, and then there's also a turn lane at Young, uh, some turn lanes at Young and Perry. Um, one thing we did find in the study, um, and this is not necessarily due to this particular development, there's, as we all know, there's a, a high amount of traffic on Main Street. Um, so we do, we did see some high delays for traffic wanting to exit the development and try to make a left turn onto Main Street. The right turns move relatively well. Those are at level service B and C, so those, those move well. Uh, so one thing we did recommend was, uh, putting some signage up and saying no left turns during kind of the peak hours, that morning rush hour, that evening rush hour. Um, and hopefully, uh, you know, uh, the traffic will use the connectivity both kind of provided, and then ideally kind of in the future to find their way over to, um, either Young Street or potentially through Parker Ridge and then up to, um, Redford Place Drive, right? Um, so just a, a couple of options there. Um, if there's particular questions you have on the study or how we went about it, I'm happy to answer those, but that's a quick two-minute summary for you all.
All right. Thank you.
I just have a, a question. Is there a particular threshold that you encountered where that heavier traffic was reached based on the number of units planted?
Uh, no. So when we, um, when we talk about the levels of service and the amount of delay, right, those are all averages. So we're talking about seconds per vehicle, right? So there's instances where we would see, um, very little cars, but those very little cars are experiencing high delays. high delays. That's okay, because what we want to keep doing is, we want to move where the majority of the traffic is, and that traffic is on Main Street, right? So there, if, I don't know how deeply anybody reads these reports, but there was some discussion of how to treat Old Rogers and School Street. And there's a lot of different options in there, but at the end of the day, we felt that the best thing to do was just to kind of leave it as is, just because we have a school that generates a lot of traffic, but it's in a very short amount of time. And there's a lot of different options for mitigation there, but the question is, you know, would we actually want to pursue any of those? Could we actually pursue any of those? Because we have to get all of this approved through NC DOT. So, couple, couple of things in, in there. Is there an individual threshold to answer your specific question? And no, I believe what we saw, even, even without this development, right, we, we see high delays on Perry Street to kind of make a left turn out. That intersection currently operates at level of service F. And again, it's not because there's a lot of traffic on Perry Street so much, it's the traffic on Main Street.
So, so the existing intersection is in F, and the improvements are going to make that much better, is what it sounds like, regardless of the number, number of units that are being had, since the intersection is already...
So we, we weren't recommending improvements at School Street and Old Rogers. However, if we, if we actually were to implement a, a left turn restriction from Perry onto Main, we actually see that that intersection improves from an F to a B and a C. So we're able to do that and redirect, and redirect traffic through the neighborhood or through the future connectivity down to the, the collector that's going to run through the town's campus and Parker Ridge.
So, and, and because of the, the drawing, I couldn't quite understand the connection that was being made from, from the new street that they had into the town property, because those streets look like they're, like, got to be in the matrix or something to connect to it. So, that's what's, I'm a little bit confused about, how the redirection of traffic is going to, to be handled. Because it looks like if, if, if during that no-left-turn time period, if you want to go what would be more or less south on Main Street, what is, somebody has to go through the Parker Ridge development to get to Rogers Road?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Let's see. Hopefully, tell me if you can see the cursor on the screen.
I can see the cursor, right.
Yeah. So, right, right here, and again, I have to be careful how I speak for the applicant. This, I, I think this is what you heard Worth talking about, right, right here. I think the applicant's committing to building this road to this, to this point. There's a little bit of an offset here. What, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is if you can't make this left turn out from here to go south on Main like that, you would have to work your way through the neighborhood, which would be coming through here, down this way, and, and over here. And, and I understand that that's sensitive, because obviously that's a topic that came up at the neighborhood meeting. But we did see that, that, and hopefully I didn't lose the cursor here. But we did see that this intersection right here with the installation of turn lanes does operate acceptably from a pure level of service standpoint, right?
So what are the, I'm just trying to look at that, because why are we even tying Perry Street into that? Why can't you leave Perry Street the way it is and make a new entrance on Main, South Main? Is there...
I'd have to defer that question to the applicant.
Can I just ask one clarifying question here? I'm here to listen, but I do have one clarifying question. Mr. Worth said that there was going to be no access via South Main or School Street, so I don't understand what that means.
Sure. What I meant by that is, is that we don't have any individual-site driveways, like directly onto Main or directly onto School. So we'll have the construction of this sort of, and we don't know what it's going to be called. We don't, like, we've asked, is this a new Perry Street? Is it just some other, you know, a, a new name? And then Perry Street ultimately, you know, ends at this intersection. That, you know, we still haven't gotten total clear answer on, but essentially what would happen is this existing Perry Street, South Main Street intersection is going to be reconfigured in this, at this northern area.
So it's just that one intersection that you're talking about, will have no access via Main or School?
Right. In order, in order to get to this site, you're going to have to travel on this new collector street and then, and then make a right or a left to, to get into the site. You won't be, there won't be a direct driveway, you know, from Main Street where you're just immediately turning right into the site, or on School Street, turning, you know, directly into the site.
Okay. So, Mr. Peach, was there a recommendation for a turn off of Main Street into the development? Because I thought that there was. Which made me question. All of the new work that's being done on Main Street, how does that play in when all these millions of dollars are being spent to already fix the road and then have to come back?
So we did recommend a short 75-foot right turn lane from Main Street into the driveway. That's correct.
Okay. And so the traffic study, just for clarification, so the traffic study does look at those turns into the development that are not, you're not planning to be there?
That, that's correct. So there's existing traffic on Perry Street. We took that into consideration.
Okay.
You're very welcome.
Yeah. I've got one question for Mr. Mills. I think it'd probably be more for you. The connection through the town campus, I know you had committed to constructing a new thoroughfare to the property line. What is the timing on the connection through the town campus to the street that Parker's Gate will be constructing?
So I was reading through their conditions, and that street connection, I'm trying to, there's a certain certificate of occupancy that they have to have that street completed by in order to keep progressing with the phasing of their development. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but there is a timing mechanism for them to get that done. And with Parker Ridge having their zoning in place, you know, they're, they're ahead of the entitlement and development timeline than we are. So do I have an exact date on, on when that will take place? I don't, but it's going to be the responsibility of that developer to, to get their street all the way to East Young Street. And I'll note too, we, I think we saw this TIA maybe seven to 10 days ago. And so we haven't had a whole lot of time to digest it, but I, I would offer here, if it's the will of this board, we could offer a similar condition to what Parker Ridge made. And, and we can make this, we can go ahead and construct this missing piece from our property boundary into the street that Parker Ridge is going to build. And so we would be willing to make that a condition today. Obviously, we've got to work with the planning department and Mr. Neal on what that language looks like, but, but we're committed to that if, if the board wants to accept that, sort of, as they're making a recommendation this evening.
And that was, that was my concern, because as Mr. Peach said, the, the traffic would have to reroute through Perry, but if that connection was made, then it could reroute through the town campus and not through Perry.
It, it would be a much more suitable way for, for folks, if they were having trouble making a left on Main to, you know, kind of make their way back up to Young Street and, and get the way they want to go. It also lets them go through Parker Ridge, which could, could be just a more direct route in general. And I had asked Matt, you know, if that has any impact on the TIA figures or recommendations, and I'm sure that we'd have to go back and, and look at that. But, but I guess, big picture, we are willing to make that a condition of our application.
Okay. Thank you. And I had one question maybe for Mr. Peach. The, the intersection, the new intersection on Young Street, would that be single, singleized initially, or would that have to meet the traffic warrants at a later date?
The intersection at town, town campus?
Yes.
I do not, well, to, to my knowledge, I, I don't believe that there is a signal planned for that intersection. But kind of as Worth stated, we, we hadn't really taken that into, into account in our analysis. So really what we have in the TIA right now is making the connection through Perry, not extending down to the town campus or to Parker Ridge. Just from, you know, experience, Worth is right. I think there's a, certainly a benefit to that. You could have a additional connection out to Young Street that might take some traffic off of the neighborhood. You know, of course, when you make a connection, you can't prohibit people from, from kind of driving through a neighborhood, but they would at least have another option, right? Additionally, drivers would have an option of going through Parker Ridge to get to the roundabout and up to the signal at Redford Place and Main, right? Whereas right now, if they can't make a left turn out onto Main Street, they've got to go to Young, up to Main, and then over. So they're kind of traveling north and east to go south and west, right? So it's a little bit less efficient that way. So, all that said, I think there's definite benefit to what he was talking about.
Thank you.
So my question, I guess, for Mr. Mills on the Perry Street, like I said, that's a small, right now, that all the traffic in town is routing through, you can't pass two cars at one time now.
Right.
So I'm just kidding. Why is that even considered? Why are we even tying that into this? Why are we not just leaving Perry Street completely out of this corridor that you're, why not just leave Perry Street as is on South Main Street and not even let people come through there?
I, I think...
Or can you make that?
I think, well, the, the biggest issue that we faced with this kind of new intersection with Perry and, and this collector street is, it's almost like this new collector street replaces Perry Street for, you know, that first 150 feet off of South Main. So how we can keep that in place while also building out the new recommended street network has been a challenge. And we know, we've assumed, since we've known about the collector street, that there's going to have to be some reconfiguration of how this interacts with the existing Perry Street and how people ultimately get up to South Main. If you have both Perry and this new collector street, I don't know if you get into a issue with spacing between roads and creating a, a new sort of safety issue, if you've got, you know, two streets within maybe 100 feet of each other. I'll say too, part of the issue for us is we don't have a, a lot of South Main Street frontage to kind of operate within. I guess hard, there's only so many places that, that new street could ultimately intersect with South Main. So, so that has just been kind of a, a wrinkle that we've had to work through. And this is, to date, this is, you know, what we would say is maybe the most likely scenario for how these two streets would interact. I certainly understand the concerns about Perry Street. And being out there, I, I know that you can't, it's not a kind of bidirectional street. So I think, you know, part of that offer of, of building out that street network is we know that we don't want people to go through Perry Street either.
Right. But I think that's kind of what the plan is, is everybody routes through Perry Street to get over to Young. And I, I think we need another option, because that's not, that's a one-lane road going through there. And I don't think you're, I, I don't know if you're looking at buying, widening that road, making it, but it's not an option for that neighborhood, I don't think.
No, I, I agree. And, and I think, you know, whatever we can do to, to make that, you know, not the preferred route for folks, I mean, including the construction of this missing piece of, of right-of-way to the town's property. I mean, I, I think we're, we're open to, to any and all solutions to make sure that, you know, we're not having a lot of cars go through the Perry Street neighborhood.
I think leave Perry Street out, completely out of this connector street and leave it the way it is, but that's a discussion we can have.
Yeah. I, I, I got a lot of concerns about the way this looks like. I mean, if, if you've been in this town before all the road was chewed up for the detours, and you understand that the Perry community is actually on the National Historic Study List right now, the last thing we want to do is create a situation where you have a lot more traffic going through there. With the detours in place, I mean, people who know the town know it's a little bit of an easy way to get around the detour alternately toward the way the detour is designed for you to get around the mess, right? And I intentionally don't go through the neighborhood because I have a lot of respect for people's houses and privacy. And I, I just can't see the general public, especially four-apartment buildings, having that kind of respect for an older community, especially with those newer roads. So I, I would, I would agree. I, I can't see it being feasible to have Perry included as, as a way in and out of the neighborhood, regardless of what you do down in the south, connecting it to the town property in, in Parker Ridge. People aren't going to go that far when they can sneak through a neighborhood. Even if you decide to put no-through-traffic signs, then it just becomes something the police department has to, you know, hassle with, with policing, along with that no-left-turn lane. I'm glad to hear that you said you're committed to connecting your property down to that road, because I know that, as I recall, the town project doesn't even have that road as being planned to be built initially, at, at least not until all the rest of the stuff is being put together. So, so that's going to be a very important condition. So if this continues to move forward, then that condition, I feel, needs to definitely be in there, to connect that road down to the feeder out to Young from, from Parker Ridge. But even with that, I, I mean, regardless of what happens here, it, it's, you, you can't seem to avoid forcing people to go through communities with through traffic. And, and I, I just can't...
I think that's an, I think you're right...
I just can't, I just can't feel good about that.
And you, you raise a good point about whatever happens here is an issue. And, and whether it's a single-family subdivision, townhouses, or something like the plan that, that we have tonight, if that road's on your transportation plan, you've got to submit a subdivision that shows how it's realigned. And so I think, we as applicants, we understand that, one, that is a, a problem, regardless of the style of development or, or the, the housing type you, you bring in here. But we are willing to go above and beyond what RL subdivision would, would be required to do under the LDO. So I think, you know, with the added condition to make that connection, I think that is about as good of an outcome that the town can have, assuming that this is, that this property is, is developed in the future. And again, whether it's a, a single-family subdivision or a mixed-use community, that, that road is, you know, still going to pose an issue, unless it gets taken off the transportation plan. But, but as long as it's there, we're committed to making this as well-connected as possible.
If you have a question, Mr. Mills?
Do, I have two questions really. The, because you still have the School Street side, which you could connect with, right, and keep people out of the neighborhood and into a street that either potentially could connect into Parker or onto Main in that section, right? So there's an opportunity. It doesn't necessarily go directly to the retail side of the, the place, but if you're leaving and you need to get out, it's better to go that way than, even if you take, if you took Perry, you'd go up north and you'd have to hook all the way around. So if you wanted to get on South Main, that's a better way to look at it, and a shorter connector if you want to put it there. The other question I have is really around School Street because of the school. The parents are going to park, they're going to park in the, every single apartment spot in traffic to, to wait to pick up their kids. Is there going to be some sort of fencing cross, I mean, they're just going to walk across. I mean, I, I don't think, if I recall, elementary school doesn't have a... And I don't think, if I recall, elementary school doesn't have any fencing on that side of the building. So the kids will just come straight out of the school and go walking across School Street and into the apartment complexes?
If, I will say, if, if there were parents that...
There will be.
They, they, they wouldn't, they would have to go through that new Collector Street and through the development in order to...
Wish they would. But again, it would add even more traffic to that, to that locale because not only would you have normal traffic, you'd have the school time traffic, they'd be parking lined up on those poor people's lawns, waiting for people to come.
Yeah.
Right?
I think you can...
But if you give them an entrance, at least on the other side by School Street, they're going to do it, they're going to do it anyways, but they have a convenient way in and out of that place versus going through somebody's neighborhood.
Understood. And when we were going through the preliminary planning process and trying to piece together a concept plan and what this looks like, our advice from planning was just don't touch School Street. I mean, you can even see how Parker Ridge has a cul-de-sac bulb rather than connect to School Street. And I think that was through conversations with, with planning and...
And the town board, when Parker Ridge came before the board, there was a lot of discussion about School Street.
Yeah, and I just, right now, just because of this location and that facility, what you've done is essentially locked off that whole side and pushed everybody up through the northern properties, right? And if you give them an outlet at least at that, yeah, you're going to have school traffic, yeah, you're going to have people park in, but they're not going through a tiny subdivision on small, narrow streets because they absolutely will.
I think we're open to all possibilities.
I would strongly relook at that and even at the board level, rethinking it just because of what we're doing here. And if there's no ability to come off of South Main Street directly and not go to Perry, then you've got to give another outlet.
So will NC DOT not allow another entrance off of Main Street? Is that what the concern is? Or is that where, is that where this design is coming from? Is that there's no additional...
I think a lot of what's driving it is just that initial, there's, there's the street called out on the, on the transportation plan. So we've, we know that we've got to have, to locate that within our site. And what we've tried to do is, is bring in room to make that build out in connection, but not have it smack dab in the middle of, of the site, which essentially kind of wipes out everything east of, east of that new road.
I guess what I'm trying to visualize here is, because in the, in the previous plan for this, that building, the residential structure that was, that's there right now was initially intended to stay there and be repurposed. And now I understand that's being given the option to be moved and demolished. Which, on another side note, are there plans to preserve any of the stone that was, that was used in that property? Because my understanding, one of the reasons why it was intended to stay was because that stone came from the Roseville corridor.
I think Matt and Barbara Shuey can speak to sort of their visions for kind of repurposing some of those materials. And I've, here, I'll just let them come up and if they want to, do you want to share any?
I mean, it's a side note to the rest of the conversation, but I mean, it is something I wanted to explore. So at worst...
Would you please state your name for the record?
Sorry, Matt Shuey and my wife Barbara.
Thank you.
At worst, if the house has to be, or can't be repurposed, then we would take the stone and what was the, there's a project in downtown Raleigh at a funeral...
It's a cemetery.
Cemetery, sorry.
They, they want stone like this for a veteran memorial. So we thought that would be a really good use for it. Don't know that they would need all of it, but we simply don't want to see the stone go away. We want it to stay, we want it to be used in some kind of memorial close by. As a matter of fact, we even considered if, if Roseville was doing anything, we would like for it to go there. But yeah, the building itself, the house itself is just not, I don't think that you could move the house and have it be structurally sound and taking the granite off and then putting it back up. I don't know that that would happen, but...
It's potentially viable, but it would be, again, if you could repurpose portions of it and stay in Roseville, ideal, use the rest for the other project. Again, that, these are the, the goals and the intent that we're trying to maintain. The specifics are, you know, how the development is permitted, et cetera.
Also, I think the reason that we've had to make this decision is because we simply couldn't leave it on the property, right guys? That we couldn't leave the house on the property because of the requirements for the road.
Yeah, I was, I was going to, to that once you guys...
Yeah, yeah. So that's why we are where we are, is we couldn't, couldn't leave it.
Because of the requirements for the road, is that what you're saying, for coming in? Or because of their design choice for coming in?
We'll let Courtney speak to it, yeah.
Courtney McQueen with Kennedy Landscape Architects. So I just wanted to speak to that a little bit. So the issue with the placement of the existing house, the proposed collector is a 65-foot wide right-of-way. And I believe Perry's right-of-way is 60 feet, I'd have to double-check that. When you look at aligning that road that's as shown on the current CTP plan, there is no way that you can fit a 65-foot right-of-way and keep the house based on where the house is currently located. So either in this scenario that we have, we're hugging the eastern side of the property with that proposed road and we're tying into that intersection of Perry and Main, it's going, the construction for that road is going to take out the house essentially. If you look at a scenario that I know you sort of mentioned, potentially splitting the roads, keeping the Perry intersection as is, and then proposing that collector to come and maybe swerve around, there's not enough space on the western side of the house to be able to provide a 65-foot right-of-way and keep that house. And you end up having this land area that's sandwiched between two right-of-ways that would render the whole northern part of the property useless. And so by having those two proposed right-of-ways, we're not able to provide any type of development along Main Street, which I know was really the intent of that Main Street downtown plan and something that the neighbors were looking forward to. So it's really like a puzzle piece that we have going on here. The way we perceive this new collector wasn't necessarily looking at calling it Perry Street, but thinking about how Perry ties into a T-intersection to a road. So that it's not necessarily realigning Perry, but what it's doing is it's pulling people's direct access from Perry away. So like right now, if you look at the development, Perry comes in kind of like an L shape, almost J shape, and it pulls you immediately into the neighborhood. What we're looking at in this scenario is we have a new road that's intersecting with Main and then Perry would intersect with that road. So it hinders people's need to easily drive into the neighborhood. And that's how we're providing that connection. Of course, with the intent that the future roadway connection down through the property, the town's property would help alleviate some of that. Does that, does that make sense on how the two alignments work? But really, it's the right-of-way that's required for that CTP plan. As Worth mentioned, it's part of the plan, it's not tied to our development. So this is one of those scenarios where you're going to deal with this no matter what. But we're hoping that through this project that we can alleviate some of these issues and concerns that we have, as well as the neighbors have, as well as you all have, with realigning that new road. I just, I'd really like to take Perry term from that because it's really a new road that we're going to tie Perry into. Does that help?
Yeah, but, so I guess it sounds like the Shueys are, I guess I'd just say they're understanding about the house. But, so if the house goes, you're still saying you cannot leave Perry Street as is and build this corridor?
Yeah, if the house goes, we're basically looking at building the corridor for CTP plan and looking at the best way possible to connect that to Main Street. And in this scenario, this, in our view of analysis of just a simple layout, makes the best sense in order to straighten Perry, like right now, Perry's curved, right? Straighten that connection so that you're coming in from that intersection and then turning into Perry Street or continuing down the new collector.
I guess I'm just looking at all the traffic from this complex that's going in, keeping them out of Perry. If you go out, if you had to go out onto Main Street and do a U-turn to go onto Perry Street, they're probably not going to do it. They're going to go up to the traffic light and turn right and get out to the bypass or something like that. But trying to, some kind of deterrent, not to have Perry Street be so accessible from this corridor.
And I know the applicants are open to working with traffic engineers to see what kind of proposed improvements could be made at that Perry intersection with the new collector to see how we can alleviate that. That is definitely up for discussion.
How much road frontage do you have total for the property on Main Street?
Actually, I have a... Yeah. Let's see if I can pull it up. Trying to see if I can find that information for you. It might be also...
I think we need to probably keep in mind also that this, this is for the rezoning tonight and not actual approval of the plan. I know it's a, it's a concept plan at this point in time, so it'll be developed generally in that state. But I guess there could be some potential changes as it goes to the commissioners from what we see.
I just get really concerned how every time we have situations like this, that we always talk about it just being zoning, but when they're presenting these concept plans, these concept plans never seem to change. That's what I get really concerned about. And then dealing with some of the history with, with the developer, with downtown, the cobblestone project, I, I just, I can't help but be concerned that, you know, it's just not going to go the way we would like it to go just because the drawing is done and that's what they're going to stick to. And I get nervous about that. So I, that's why I get so fixated on the concepts because I've seen the concept plan go unchanged and say, well, this is what we talked about, you know, even though they know and we all know right now it's just rezoning. I just, I rarely see concept plans change a lot from, from this time.
I guess I'll just say, and that's what we're advising, recommending to the board.
Right.
The board is the final decision maker of it, but that's part of our motion.
Yeah, right.
Trying to find that information.
While you're working on that, I guess where I'm going with this is obviously when we look at the way this is just laid out, you've got a green patch that's up on Main Street that's directly across from Main Street Park. And I think that's kind of what the idea here is, to make a T-intersection with Main Street Park coming in on the west side of this, the southwest side where this pink and green combination line is. And have that come in and, and almost do the opposite of what, almost do what the road is doing right now and coming back to the back of the property. Because I, I just really think it's a horrible idea to have this connect to that community. I just, I think it's a terrible idea. I think it'll cause an undue amount of traffic, an undue amount of stress because you're going to have, regardless of how many signs and police officers sit in that, in that community, you're going to have through traffic. And that's going to be annoying as heck for those residents, especially in a historically, especially in a historically significant community. And we don't have a lot of those in Roseville. In fact, they're the only actual community that's on the study list or even on the recommendation list. So, I mean, we have to protect that for so many other reasons. And I know on paper, all these things look good and look like they're nice little accommodations, but that community needs to be left alone.
Understand.
And, and, and I, I just, I'm just very adamant about that, that position. And to the other points on, on the bordering of the, the school property too, again, you're going to need a fence on the backside of the homes that exist between this property and Main Street. So that whole pink and green line is almost going to need to be a fence from almost all the way on that corner down to the school and then all the way down to Parker if you don't want your new community to be bothered by parents parking there during peak hours to drop off their kids, because they are going to do that. And the only way to present that is to have a hard barrier that's going to prevent kids from...
And can you explain, you're saying parents are going to go through the, our proposed neighborhood?
And they're going to park in those, and they're going to park, I mean, I don't have, I can't reach obviously from here, but where that little body of water, your little pool or whatever is, they're going to use that as a, as a, as a cul-de-sac, they're going to use that as a roundabout, those two buildings in the middle of your property.
So you're saying that they're going to actually use our property as a drop-off and then have the kids walk across?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, I didn't understand, okay.
Absolutely.
And you don't want to allow it, right? Because the preference for me, because again, apartments, so most of them, or some number is going to be at work, so there's going to be lots of parking spots during that time of day versus parking and stacking up on School Street. And if they can get out on School Street, it is far better for them to go that way than it would be for them to go through somebody's smaller neighborhood. It's just not as appealing because you don't have the road frontage for the, for the retail.
I believe we, we're open to looking at any additional fencing. I mean, we've, we've added fencing to, against the other properties. We're open to look at adding fencing in other locations as well if that would help alleviate that issue. Again, we were directed to stay away from School Street, but we are, we are completely open to having that conversation again with planning and reevaluating that.
Still staying away from messing with it. We're just trying to help you understand what's going to happen, right?
Yes, yes.
And even if you just put the fence from, from just along that side, you're going to now introduce people going into other people's backyards because the kids will go around that fence in the people's backyard. So that's why I'm suggesting that fence would have to go, you know, it would be that, that whole L.
Yes, we can definitely look into that.
That's brown insurance on the corner, isn't it?
Huh?
That's brown insurance on the corner right there, isn't it?
There's, there's that and then...
And there's a couple of residences.
Yeah, there's, yeah, God, I can't think of the name. Frank and Pam, Eagles, Eagles, Eagles is right there. They're right on the corner there too, so. And there's two rental units, I think, as well, two, two...
Duplex?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think fencing could be a, a part of any proposed motion. And I think as we continue to move, I think we've got a lot of residents that, from the neighborhood that would like an opportunity to speak. And we can come back to the applicants with more questions afterwards if you have any. But I'd like to give them an opportunity to speak now, if y'all would like to hear them. And if there are any individuals wishing to speak during the meeting tonight, please, we encourage you to be prepared before you're speaking. Please state your name and address for the record. And individuals will be limited to three minutes. Larger groups are asked to designate a spokesman. So with that, I'd like to open the floor to any members of the public that would like to offer comment. Please come forward. Please, to the podium. Can you, can you please repeat that in the microphone so they can get it on record?
Penny Sykes, 303 Perry Street. And I want to thank you guys for trying to protect our neighborhood because it has been literally hell for the last two or three weeks. I nearly, last night, got hit by a car myself going to my mailbox. It was dark, it was about nine o'clock. But they're trying to fly through there, they come around that sharp curve, as you say, to cars, especially two big pickup trucks, can't get there. There's, in my yard, truck tires this wide. My point to this is, you know what's going on now, but the same thing's going to happen if they do that. It's not going to stop. It's not going to stop. 18 wheelers are coming through there. And I pictured that. But it's not going to stop if they do what they're saying it's going to, it's going to get worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Oh, okay.
To answer your previous question, we have about 220 feet, linear feet of frontage along Main Street.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Before we move on to questions and discussions? Any other questions the board has for applicants or traffic engineer staff?
I, I guess I just want to clarify what conditions the applicants willing to put on... Uh, I I guess I just want to clarify what conditions the applicants willing to put on, given the discussion that we've we've had tonight.
You're asking them to clarify?
Right.
Okay.
Hey, guys. Um, I'm Peter Cross with KDM. Appreciate everybody's uh, time this evening and all the different recommendations. I think we're willing to look at, you know, various different options. It's just, I don't want to promise that we can do something if it's not possible. We're willing to look into, you know, coming off of South Main Street. My understanding was there was some issues with DOT in doing so. I mean, appreciate the, you know, recommendations of the fencing off of School Street. Think we can definitely look into that. You know, it's quite frankly, that's not something I ever thought would happen, so we're more than happy to look into that. You know, appreciate you guys coming out here and, you know, voicing your concerns. We'll go ahead and, you know, kind of go back to the drawing board and see what we can do. But I just wanted to make sure you guys know we're more than happy to work with everybody, so appreciate it.
And I think from items that we can commit to tonight, one is the connection of that new collector street to the town property and its intersection with the street that Parker Ridge is constructing. Two is fencing along the property's frontage of School Street. If you want a caveat, you know, fencing but for an access, if if the board would like to see some sort of access to School Street, we can consider that. But but fencing, I I know for sure that we are comfortable committing to tonight. Uh, and then I think big picture, it is how, what other options for the realignment of that collector street can we cook up to try to preserve, you know, that retail area along South Main and and keep people off of Perry? I think that's the part, I I don't know how to commit to that tonight just because we haven't studied it. But we are absolutely open to, like you said, working with uh, the planning department, working with uh, Mr. Peach and trying to figure out if there's some other configuration that works better and accomplishes the goals of of the neighborhood. I know that might be hard to put into a motion, but.
I mean, you can, I'm not opposed if you want to go back and have that discussion and then come back. I like the idea of the property.
I think we, I think we're we're at a point that the the board wants us to make a decision, either approval or denial at this meeting.
And so my, I would approve the rezoning from the pure perspective of the idea of the property. It's a very consistent everything there. But the caveat there would be, there needs to be a much better job of done in understanding the, how that traffic's gonna impact that neighborhood.
Right.
Because my recommendation to the board, if they say, yep, we're just gonna have to, you know, knock down some houses and take some yard to increase that size, then my answer would, if I'm on the board, would be no.
I think that can be a a part of our recommendation to the board to to look at the plan that's presented. And I I had one question before we move on to a motion or any any other discussion. And maybe it might be better for Mr. Peach, um, in dealing with the frontage and uh, what DOT would or wouldn't allow is what would be the typical separation between intersections that DOT would would uh, like to see?
Uh, absolutely. So off the top of my head, let's see if I can go back to the, I'm sorry, let me try and go back to the concept plan so y'all will know what I'm looking at here. Oops. All right. Um, so for uh, for public roads or major driveways, of which this is kind of one and the same. For a facility along Main, uh, for a facility such as Main Street, NC DOT would look at about six hundred feet of of separation from kind of the other major public roads. So if you've only got so much frontage and you're wanting to put two driveways on to Perry Street, that's gonna be difficult. Now, when I say that, I mean, uh, I'm talking in terms of full movement access, right? So that's left turns in, left turns out, right turns in, right turns out, right? If you restrict access and you go to a right-in, right-out condition, or a left-in, right-in, right-out condition, right? And you go to um, lesser access, right, onto onto Main Street, those distances shrink up dramatically and you have a lot more flexibility. The the trade-off, though, is you wouldn't have left turns turning in or out. If you have either a second driveway or if you put it too close to a another driveway or a Main Street. I hope that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yep.
So so the frontage they've got would kind of be prohibitive of a a second full movement intersection if keeping Perry Street as a full movement also?
Correct, correct. I I think that's kind of the limiting factor, yeah.
Yeah, taking about a hundred and twenty-five foot of that, two hundred and twenty is the intersection.
Yeah.
That leaves you. Nothing.
Ninety feet.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, I I think uh, I think that answers my question on that. But as far as discussion goes, I I think with the the plans that have been, that the town has adopted with the future land use, um, you know, I feel like this property is is best designated as a high-use residential. I would like to see, you know, potentially if we make a recommendation at the board or the plan be looked at to see if there's a way to preserve the Perry Street to have a lesser of an impact on it. I I am glad to hear the developers willing to commit construction out to the town campus road. Um, I think that would, will also help uh, alleviate the the necessity for somebody trying to cut through Perry.
Because if, it depends on how you come out. If you're headed to the bypass, you're gonna go that way on Perry, right? If you're not going and you're going back into town, then you're gonna take the left on the South.
I think if somebody's still going to the bypass, they might come down to the town campus.
Somebody could cross some of these yards if they have to. But in the end, there's no good way to get out of that property as it is.
Mm-hmm. And it's it's one of the last larger tracks in Roseville that's undeveloped, unfortunately. Is there any other discussion, comments?
So so I guess what I'm hearing, though, is that the the conditions you're willing to put on tonight are the connection from the south, south end of the property to the town property connector street that's gonna be built by the Parker Ridge project. That's one condition that you're willing to, willing to add. The other condition would be for fencing along School Street. I would suggest to also add in the fencing condition that you include the southern border of the Main Street properties.
Think, I can.
I know you've got a buffer there, but I don't know, I don't know, I I don't recall reading anything about whether or not that was gonna be fenced as well. Yeah.
Talking about.
Correct.
That, so we have included an eight-foot fence for those homes.
And is that the same height, that's the eight foot that everybody on the other side is asking for too, correct?
That's correct. So we we've got an eight-foot fence along this property boundary and then an eight-foot fence on this side of the Greenway Trail for those homes on the center. So so the the additional fencing would need to be here.
And then I would also go from that bottom to the to the northeast along the bottom of the of those properties in Parker Ridge as well. No, no, we're at the bottom of the screen where you are. From there, going up toward that black, yep, going up toward the stream.
That could pose a problem for these homes' access onto School Street. If you look on map maps, it looks like their drive, this pseudo-street driveway encroaches onto the the site. And so I, and I'm trying to, maybe I can find a.
Well.
See, hold on.
Yeah, it does.
I think uh.
You're just gonna put everybody on the south, you know, everybody's just still gonna just, everybody's just gonna curl, my worry is everybody's just gonna curl around the fence. And and if it's down there, it's probably gonna be even more convenient for some people.
Yeah, I think you can, you can see how those few homes get their access to School Street is through this existing path that slightly encroaches uh, into our site.
That's even more inviting.
That's a little small dirt road when you go back that far. So it turns into dirt road at the back end of School Street and then hooks down through there.
Yeah, yeah.
That's where they can't, if you put fencing there, they can't actually get onto School Street.
Yeah, no, I'm familiar, I, yeah, I'm familiar with with what's back there. I'm just trying to figure out how to keep the kids coming from the school and and basically going on School Street to just wrap around into that parking lot.
And this is where I think in the end, you've you've almost gotta look at is.
Connecting.
Controlling it, right? And anywhere the way you look at it from my side is if you don't have some sort of ability to cross over from the apartments to the school, right, even if the school, you gotta have fencing at the school side. The kids are gonna climb over, the kids are gonna go around, the parents are gonna climb over, all that kind of stuff. But if you build it so it was built for that, you have way in and out, you have plenty of places for them to park, they're not parking on South Main Street as they were doing today. They line them up all the way down to Hardee's practically. So if you give them a way in and out of that place, then they're not going through the neighborhoods. They're parking on an area or they're in an area that's designed to handle that overflow.
I, I would say maybe some sort of uh, evergreen shrub, you know, some heavy landscaping at the edge of this parking lot may effectively kind of block that that entrance without putting these people's access into jeopardy.
They'll have to be pretty mature when you plant them, otherwise, you know, you put, you plant them two feet tall, they'll make a path by the time they get tall, you know, by the time that stuff grows in there.
We could look at a.
You know.
We we could make the plannings, you know, at the time of planning, it's the average height of a fourth grader.
I think one one concern, only concern I have about completely blocking off School Street, I understand that people are gonna be used as a cut-through. But we've got a lot of residents gonna live here and I'm I'm sure there'll be some school-aged children and now we've just, you know, tripled their distance to walk to school, trying to keep people out. And we've got to think about the the people who will be living there. They're they're might have a need.
The apartments, the young, more than likely some younger folks. Who are gonna have little ones.
Yeah.
That'd be great, like, if here, I walk my kid across the street to school.
If we've completely fenced it off, now they've got to go out to Main Street and come down Main Street to get to the school.
That's not really that hard to deal with if if you create create a sidewalk with a gated fence for the kids and had it had a gated gated access through through the through the apartment complex, then then you, you know.
I'm okay with that. I just don't want to completely fence off and create a hardship for people who may may want to move there.
Yeah. So so that would be, that would be an alternative to consider is is in that green space between those two buildings, have a have a sidewalk with with a gated entrance for the people of the development. All all I'm worried about is the number of parents that will use that neighborhood as an alternative because they're late to drop their kids off or they're late to pick them up. And they're gonna use that development in one way, shape, or form, as opposed to lining up on School Street like they're supposed to, you know.
It sounds like some people want that option and some people don't.
Well, I'm saying, I I'm I'm in favor of, I'm not opposed to to having some fencing, but I think there needs to be an option left so that the residents here could still utilize it, and that's where you're saying, a gate, or something that would be a deterrent from people parking and just using as a cut-through.
Okay. Think uh, think we could make that work?
Build it out like the connector, like make it so there is a spot that's designated for that. And then because I'm still, without having any entrance out of there, the only way to go is Perry. That's it.
I know, I know behind Roseville Middle School, there's a neighborhood and there's a, there's a, a Greenway Trail connecting, but uh, you know, I live near there and I've I've walked through it quite a bit and I've never, I haven't personally seen it being a problem with people coming in from the backside and parking to pick up kids or or trying to circumvent the rules. I see it more from the people of the neighborhood.
It's thirty minutes, basically, fifteen, thirty minutes when they're there. But if you, I mean, look at the size of that parking lot, it was four hundred and twenty, I think, was the number of parking spaces.
That's, sounds correct.
Right, so again, probably half of those will be unoccupied during the apartment times because it's. They're going to work, they're heading to work, right? So, yeah, here's the designated parking for the overflow and here's how you get in and out of there. It's doing community service, right, as the as the property. You still have a way in and out and we're not pushing people through people's driveways or.
I think we could strike a balance between the buffering and the access.
So as far as the review of the conditions, then additionally, is there any um, consideration for a condition that would um, essentially say you would not be using Perry Street?
That's the part where we just haven't, I don't think we've given it enough attention to confidently say that we can do that right now.
Okay.
There's always gotta be some use of Perry Street, but not as a main.
What's that?
Not not as a Main Street for for, I mean, you're gonna enter, that's the whole retail side of that piece. We just don't want them.
I I don't, yeah.
There's two parts to Perry Street, right? There's the one that's coming off of South Main and the one that cuts over. We don't want them to do the cut-over. But you've got to have two access points really to get in and out of that place.
Oh, Perry Street can't be used as a thoroughfare from here to Young Street.
Right.
It's not wide.
No.
Ms. Sykes said you're up in their yards right now. Everybody's driving up in their yards and you can't pass each other on that road.
So i- i- and maybe, okay, so and maybe I'm not clear on on the whole road frontage thing, but if you've got, and I know what this design has with the green space and then in a in a retail space up front. But are you saying with the two hundred and twenty feet that you have, that if you had no retail space up there? Let's just pretend this for a second. Could you not create that second street that comes in directly across from Main Street Park? Is is there not enough space allowed to do that between?
I think it's the space between Perry and wherever that new.
Wherever that new street is. That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to understand, is that is that is that literally just like absolutely a no-go? Or is it just something you haven't looked at close enough to know whether or not it's possible?
So so to answer your question, ultimately, yes, we need to go back and and reevaluate that.
Okay.
From what we've looked at prior to this meeting, what that is going to do is create two right-of-ways. I think the key here is to note that we're just not talking about a road connection, we're actually talking about a right-of-way that is not a parcel that's owned by this development. It's gonna be a town-maintained right-of-way.
Right.
So in this scenario, if you were to snake, let's say with that green spaces, that's the streetscape buffers, um, to provide the street tree requirements. If you were to take the Collector Road and put it there and keep Perry as is, you are essentially creating a landlocked parcel because this is a right-of-way. So it's gonna be a right-of-way, the space where the retail building is, right? And then the Perry Street existing right-of-way. And somehow that right-of-way, this, it has to connect down to where we're showing it now to be able to connect to the town property south of us, right? And so 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 my concern is, I have no problem looking at this, not at all. I would definitely do this.
Just a quick question, couldn't you just, I'm just throwing one out there, like the existing Perry Street, there's one house on that right-of-way corner.
Right.
Right? And there's a driveway on Perry Street. It's just closed Perry Street at the very end of that. You get sixty foot of right-of-way back. And I know it's, you'd have to talk to the town because I think it's town-owned at that point. So you get sixty foot of right-of-way back, you open it up on the other side, sixty-five feet, so you still have two hundred and fifteen feet of road frontage on the on the the yellow, that green part. And then you just turn that that road right there as you're in and out.
I I I thought about that, but I think Perry is the only way for that community to come out onto Main Street, so they would have to go all the way out to Young. I understand, but I think that's what happened on the last proposal. They were like, no, because the last proposal had them realigning Perry with Main Street Park.
But I think with the two, this property, I think with the cobblestone and everything else, turning anywhere, coming off Perry Street and turning onto South Main is gonna be a pain in the butt.
And I think that's another one to note is to to dead-end, you know, to to dead-end Perry Street onto Main Street. It's just one more consideration. I'm not saying it's a good idea, but I'm, that's one of the considerations. The other thing, again, this is just off the top of my head. I don't know how this is gonna, you know, feel to the to the to the homeowners, right? But what if you took the the long oriented retail properties and put them front-facing Perry Street? And then they would be backloaded for parking and all that. Then your entrance into your whole project would come on that left side behind the, behind the retail. So the front, in other words, your retail is looking at Perry Street. You see what I'm saying? So the only thing you're gonna get there is really pedestrian traffic. But then all your vehicle traffic is behind there coming into the neighborhood and then joining into your main road that's coming into the back of the town property.
So.
So that you're not adding vehicle.
You're keeping how Perry Street is now and confronting it with.
With 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 your retail, which opens up all that space behind where you have and just, and and frankly, I would even consider. And just, and frankly, I would even consider putting a parking garage in there too to free up more of your parking area in the back because Roseville is going to need a downtown parking garage in the future. And this property would be ideal for that, given its location, particularly to Main Street Park and all the other cobblestone and all of those kinds of things. If you put two buildings and then put a parking garage in between them, coming right off of Main Street parallel to Perry, you solve a lot of parking issues. You free up green space in the backside of your property to do a little bit more work with your separation from school and all the other stuff, you know? I know this is all concept planning and I know we're just talking about zoning, but when we talk about conditions about preserving historic community, that's why I'm looking for a condition that preserves Perry and doesn't join it directly to the community. And that gives you an opportunity to do that. And if, and frankly, and I'll tell you this is frankly, if you cannot provide a condition for Perry tonight, then I can't vote for it because I can't see Perry joining to this kind of, this kind of traffic. I just, I'm not comfortable with that personally.
I think, I think you're asking for, I mean, we're kind of being tasked with approving or denying the plan that's presented before. And when you start getting into completely redesigning, that starts to take it to another level.
That's what the problem is, though. I mean, they always come in with plans like this that never change. And then we look like we're approving a bunch of stuff. And then the town board, I don't feel like they look at the plans enough and think that they see the same thing and just say, "Hey, well, that's a good plan." And the concept plans, it just never change. And that's what I get concerned with. All the projects I've seen with these concepts are quote-unquote "concepts," but they never change because they're drawn that way.
He says a lot of that work, good work comes to the town board.
I know.
And so, they're the ones that are watching for the changes to see what is in and is not happening regarding the town.
Oh, I know. I've tracked enough of these over the years.
And he's made a lot of recommendations to get to this point of the plan as well. I mean, it just, this isn't the first time it's being shown to staff or anybody.
Right, but you also see how we kind of chuckle at the fact that there's not even a fence planned on the backside of School Street because it was a recommendation to not mess with School Street. And I think we've made it pretty clear that that's something we got to deal with. So, I understand what the planning staff is doing, but that's what our obligation here is too, is to make sure a lot of things are thought of. And, well, I'll just beat a dead horse, but that's my position. I'm not comfortable with Perry Street being included in, you know, in the planning. And I'll just say that.
Yeah, and we certainly respect that position. I've got to look out for...
I understand.
The interests of Matt and Barbara.
I get it, I get it.
You know?
I get it.
So, what we can commit to tonight, absolutely we will. What we need to go and take a harder look at, we absolutely will. And I think that's as much as we can offer tonight.
Yeah, no, that's fair, that's fair.
And I will say, let me say, that our Planning Board, Planning Department knows what are the wishes of the town, of the board. And so, that's why they have relayed information about School Street.
Oh, I get, oh, I know that, I know that, yeah.
That's what they're acting on, what they have been directed to give.
Right. I understand that, but I guess what I'm just saying is that it, that what gets lost in translation is what is meant by that. And what they took that is, is just stay away from School Street and just leave it as is. And really, what the town is saying is don't connect to School Street.
But, don't connect what to School Street?
Well, any sort of additional, any additional roadway into it.
Because the last time when we talked about Parker Ridge, we had a long discussion about the traffic that would be on School Street and how they wanted, it was best to stay away from School Street.
Right.
With no changes as small as it has been in the past.
Right, right.
So, that's why it came from the board, the department, to stay away from School Street.
As, in terms of connecting vehicle traffic to it.
Or that specific case, right?
Right.
Parker's a very big development.
Right.
And so, people coming out are going to go out through School Street, which creates traffic.
Right.
Not necessarily. In this case, you do have some apartments. It's not as big as the Parker subdivision. But for this case, I would say, yeah, you want to take something and take a look at that street. It's going to happen whether you like it or not.
Yeah, yeah, and they may or may not agree with that. I don't, I don't know what they will do.
I think...
Make notes and...
You know?
To me, it's either one option is you open up the Main Street entrance to wider and not Perry Street.
Right.
Or you connect to School Street in one manner or another.
And I would agree with that.
Mr. Chairman, may I, I want to say something here. I've been quiet tonight trying to listen and learn. But I was also saying this to the people that live on Perry Street or in that subdivision. I know that you're all upset with the way traffic's going now, but you've also got to understand it's a temporary thing. And I hope you all are not basing on this temporary traffic on what's going to be in the future, in the next year and the year after. So, I hate to see you lose your connectivity on your Perry Street, knowing that is, that when the intersection uptown Roseville is fixed, that you won't have to go through there anymore. And as far as the house on South Main Street, that's, I assume you all have declared unsuitable for habitation or trying to move it. I can say that it is very in bad shape because I've done utility work on it. So, it all, using a little common sense, that you're just as well to figure on moving it so that you'll be able to do what you want to with that area of right-of-way on South Main Street.
Sir? I think that's it.
Any other comments or discussion? Not the floor be open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion.
All right.
For REZ 2305, South Main Street. I recommend a recommendation to approve the zoning with the conditions as so stated by the applicant, as well as strongly, we're making a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to not approve it unless there is a better improvement around the traffic in and out of this that does not impact Perry Street.
Okay.
The side part of Perry Street.
And we need to make sure we include a consistency statement with that.
Because it is consistent with the plan of the town, remember?
Future land use plan?
Future land, yeah.
All right, thank you. We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Pierce says second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
One opposed. Motion carries four to one. Thank you. All right. On to the next section is the Communications Planning Director's report.
Good evening, Planning Board. At our last meeting, you all made a recommendation of approval for text amendment 2401. And those are development standard revisions to the residential high zoning district as well as some updates to parking standards. And you all made the excellent suggestion to make sure we included any appropriate definitions with that. We are working on that and we expect that text amendment to be on the August 6 Town Board meeting agenda. Otherwise, I do not have any updates for you.
Okay. Thank you. Town Attorney's report?
Just a quick update. We are continuing to work through bylaws and rules of procedure for the Planning Board. And we met together with staff and we are getting closer to presenting a revised draft for you all to review and look forward to moving forward with that. So, thank you for a good discussion tonight. Great job.
Thank you for the report. All right, is there any other business? All right, here are none. The floor is open for a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion where you're due.
We have a motion. Is there a second? All second. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Here are none. Motion carries. We're adjourned.